I'd like to call to order the December meeting of the Woodford County Board of Education. All board members are present and accounted for. If we could all rise and face the flag, and I'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much for that. We have no communications to share, nor do we have any proposed amendments to the agenda. We'll now go into the portion of the meeting called the Superintendent's Report. Superintendent Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Good evening and welcome to our December Board of Education meeting. This is our last meeting of 2019, at least I think. And the first semester of school has certainly flown by. There have been a number of student performances over the past couple of weeks, and more are scheduled this week. It's great for our students to have performance opportunities, and I appreciate all of our staff who work so hard with our kids to get them ready to take the stage. Final exams are also this week, so good luck to our students as they take those exams. At tonight's meeting, we are pleased to recognize David Button for his service as the School Resource Officer at Woodford County Middle School. David recently retired from Brussel's Police Department, and he did an outstanding job in the SRO role and truly became a part of the WCMS family. Winter sports are in full swing at both Woodford County Middle School and the high school. I hope you get an opportunity to come out and support our student athletes. There are some events over the holiday break and even more throughout January and February. As we close the first semester of school and look forward to Christmas and the new year, I wish each of you a wonderful holiday season. This time of year can be, can bring mixed emotions for many in our community, and my hope is that everyone can experience joy, peace, and love. Thank you again for being here this evening. It's an honor to serve as your superintendent, and I know with all of us working together, we can become the flagship school district in this state.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. And we'll now move to item B, which the superintendent introduced, and we're going to recognize tonight Officer David Button, who served so well at Woodford County Middle School for many years. I've asked Ms. Bradley if she would say a little bit about Mr. Officer Button, and then I'll say a few words after that.
Okay. So Officer Button joined the police department in Nicholasville in 1995, and then transferred here to Woodford County in 1998, and became an SRO at the middle school in 2000. Tracy Bruno, our principal at WCMS, says Officer Button has been an invaluable asset to WCMS. He is far and away the most caring and personable SRO I have ever had the pleasure with which to work. Many SROs only deal with criminal activity in schools. Officer Button consistently went above and beyond to build relationships with students in the school. This not only helps when a student has a problem, but it allows kids, provides our kids with a window into law enforcement. Students that know Officer Button have a different opinion of police than they had before entering our school. They see that police are here to protect and serve. Working alongside Officer Button for the past four and a half years showed me how truly selfless he is and how his focus is only taking care of and loving students. Assistant Chief Young said that Officer Button mastered being friendly with students without becoming a friend, a distinction that is important at the middle school age level. And a middle school student told me that Officer Button was like a big teddy bear, and that they were going to miss him every day. So thank you so much for your service through our schools. It is greatly appreciated.
I'd like to add a few words, and then I'll ask any other member of the superintendent if they'd like to say anything. And then I'll read from a, something we have for the officer. You know, Officer Button and people in the audience, a lot of times we choose a vocation that we don't get an opportunity a lot on a daily basis to make a difference in other lives. You, my friend, you chose a vocation where you had the opportunity of making a positive difference. And I've had so many people tell me about the difference you made at the middle school and everything. That's a wonderful thing. And you did it every day with grace, you did it with seriousness, but you did it with compassion. And I know in my heart that there's many, many students in their life will talk about, will treat others the way you treated them. And my friend, that's a luxury. Thank you very much. Anybody else?
I would just echo, our partnership with the Brussel's Police Department is just excellent, and I'm so grateful for it every day because of the protection they give our students, but also for the quality of people they send to work in our schools every day. And I will miss you. We will. Thank you again.
I've had two kids go through the middle school, a son and a daughter, and I've seen both as a parent, you and Bo as well, directing traffic in the mornings and the evenings, and it is crazy at the middle school. And not only will my kids never forget you and what you've done, I won't either. I appreciate it. Parents don't give you all enough credit at that point. You know, it's crazy. So thank you. Thank you all.
I would just end and say that I've had the pleasure of working with Officer Button. Ever since I've worked in Woodford County, he's been here. He came before me, and I guess you get to retire before me, so that's only fair. Just, you are a great SRO, and I really think that even more important, you're just a great person. You have a good heart, and you've made a difference in the lives of every child that went through the middle school. And we appreciate you so much. We can't thank you enough.
Good job.
David probably could have retired a couple of different times, and he's talked about it. And I think the thing that he struggled with the most was he didn't want to leave the middle school. And I think that speaks volumes to not only how he approached his work, but also how he was embraced by the school community. And it truly was a neat thing to see when you walked in that building and to see him interact with students and with staff. And he was truly a part of that team and was a part of how that school has transformed itself over the last five years. And so, thank you for your service. Thank you for giving of yourself and truly becoming a part of the school community. Because when that happens, that's when that partnership works at its best, and I think we've been able to see that.
David, I'd like to read to you from the outstanding service recognition certificate we have for you tonight. Officer David Button, for his outstanding service to the students of Woodford County Public Schools, your exceptional services are acknowledged with much grateful appreciation by the Woodford County Board of Education this 16th day of December 2019. Let's give Officer Button a round of applause. Appreciate your service. You're a lot of love. You're like the saints.
I just want to say thanks for the opportunity to let me serve as your resource officer for the past nine years. It's been an experience I've never before had, and the best school district in the state.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
The next item on the agenda is the treasurer's report. Is there a motion to approve the November financial report?
Come here.
By Ms. Edlin.
Edlin.
Is there a second?
Second.
By Ms. Springgate. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, motion carries. All right. Okay. We have one person who has at least one person, maybe more, if you would ask. Thank you, Angel. Okay. Sarah McCowley would like to talk about the public forum. Ms. McCowley, welcome.
Hello, I'm here tonight to speak about the public forum. When I looked at the agenda for tonight's meeting, I saw at the bottom at the regular agenda, the approval of a schematic design for a new high school, Phase One. And I'd like to know what happened to the public forums that we talked about throughout the summer and into the fall. Public forums are the only chance for the community to have input, answer, receive answers from the board members when questions are asked. So that's why I think it's very important, no matter how long this process takes. I think that that public input is very important. I also wonder if we have an idea of what we can afford. How can we approve a design without a for-sure cost? So those are questions that I'd like to have answered tonight and for the board to consider before they vote on approving a schematic design this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to the consent agenda. Does any board member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda?
I'd like to remove the travel request with communication instructions.
Okay. We'll move that to item H. Travel request for communication. Okay. All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda other than the item that was removed this evening?
Summoned.
There's a motion by Ms. Richardson to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Edlin. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, motion carries. We'll now go into our regular agenda. Is there a motion to accept notification of personnel matters from the superintendent?
Summoned.
By Ms. Bradley. Is there a second?
Second.
By Ms. Richardson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, motion carries. Item B. Is there a motion to accept notification of payment of bills?
Summoned.
By Ms. Edlin. A second?
Second.
By Ms. Richardson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, motion carries. Item C. Approved minutes of the November 6th, November 18th, board meetings, all intended to all eligible to vote. Is there a motion to approve the 6th and the 18th meetings?
Summoned.
There's a second by, a motion by Ms. Edlin, a second by Ms. Richardson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, motion carries. All right. Item D is approve the minutes of the November 11th meeting. The only people who will be voting on this will be Ms. Springgate, Ms. Bradley, and I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the November 11th meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bradley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, motion carries, three to zero. All right. Item E. Approve the 2021 instructional calendar of Mr. Wells.
Yeah, so you have three options that were presented last week. The committee, I think, was unanimous in option number two, which had the fall break the first full week in October. That was the difference between that and option one. So that was our recommendation.
And on Fayette County's fall break, is there the week prior?
It is. Now, Fayette County's fall break is a two-day, it's basically a long weekend, Thursday and Friday, and that is the week, the week prior. Yes.
And I will say, I think the committee met on multiple occasions. They, you know, had good questions, good feedback, good input. They went and sought, consulted with their constituents, with their schools, with other parents. They really did a fabulous job. They do a lot of work on that committee, so I'm very thankful to them.
For sure, yes.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt option two for the 2021 school instructional calendar.
There's a motion by Ms. Edlin, a second by Ms. Springgate, to adopt option number two as presented by the calendar committee. Everybody understand that? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, motion carries. All right. Item F. Approve the BG-5 High School Choir Room project. And Ms. Smith presented this to us last week at our planning session. There's a motion to approve.
Summoned.
And Ms. Bradley, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Richardson, second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
I just want to say, I appreciate when the public comes and comments, and I know I had brought up, asking the board if we would have a policy to respond to the public comments, because I feel like, as board members and elected officials, that would just be the right thing to do. That's what I would want if I were the public coming and commenting at a meeting. I would want an answer, I would want some feedback. I just feel like it's important to treat people how you would want to be treated. And in regards to the schematic...
Wait a second. We haven't got to that yet.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I thought we were on the choir room.
Yeah. Any, is there any, any discussion on item F?
No.
All right.
Actually, yes.
Okay, yes, there is.
I just would like to compliment Amy and Mr. Hawkins on coming in under budget with that.
And, sorry, we appreciate it.
You don't get credit when you come under budget.
On time for our students and coming in under budget, so thank you all for that.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the BG-5, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, motion carries. All right, now, item G. Ms. Smith, you want to introduce this?
Ms. Smith, here?
Yes. I would like to defer to Mr. Locke if possible. He can explain this far better than I can.
Mr. Locke, the floor is all yours, sir.
All right, thank you. Angel, if you could, go ahead and pass this to me. With me tonight is Michael Hughes. He is more responsible for the choir project getting done on time than I am, much more so. So tonight is the first kind of official submittal, and there'll be several other submittals that are scheduled for this. This is the schematic design submittal for the new high school. There will be another design development submittal, and then there'll be a construction documents submittal that all go before the board. So this is like the first of three submittals that the board will be looking at. So this is precursor to us sending the schematic design, which is just the early look of what the high school is. And then once, if the board does decide to approve this, then it would be sent to KDE. It'll go to their facilities branch department, and they'll spend two, three weeks or so reviewing it. They'll come back with comments. That'll go to Mr. Hawkins, as well as a copy to myself and the board chair. So that, that's kind of the process that we'll go through. So this is just the first of three. And what we have before you on the screens is kind of a duplicate of what you have. Also, Ms. Smith has a hard copy of the full-size drawings that we handed off to her as well. So we can go through the presentation real quick, if you would like us to, just kind of go over some of the highlights of where we are with the project.
Highlights will be found here.
Okay.
Is it working?
Is it not working?
Click it now, see if it works. There we go.
So I'm gonna skip to the highlights here real quick. There's a lot of different drawings that we provide. All right, so this is the first, the first floor plan, which shows kind of the current configuration of the building. And you'll notice kind of in that gray area near the center on the bottom, that is the administrative area. The blue on the bottom right, the left-hand side of that is the choir and the music suite. We're also anticipating that being the storm shelter. We're actually reviewing that as a, with a peer review, which is required by code now, for them to look at that as a safe haven in the event of a tornado. To the right of that is an auditorium. Just above that area in orange there is the kitchen and the commons area, where the commons area is going to be the cafeteria. And then what we're showing in here is a full-size competition gym. That's that green square area that would seat anywhere from 1900 to 2000. It also includes about a 25, 3,000-square-foot wrestling room, as well as a weight room in the back half of it. And then once you get into the area where the administration is, I'll just point it over here yourselves. So we have our FMB rooms in this area. Having those close by and have them close to where the storm shelter is is always a good idea. We have health rooms over here, as well as our three culinary, tech ed, media center. This is our learning street scheme. We're talking about, you know, the cafeteria and the commons, as well as the media center over here being the axes or the two kind of focal points of the learning street. And then we go off to different wings with the CTE, ag shop, engineering, industrial arts, as well as business. World languages in here, and then we have social studies along the way there. So that's the first floor. On the second floor, we have our science department up here with the three labs on the back half, and then all of the science classrooms on the front half of the building with our English department wing here and our math department wing over here. And we do have the media classroom over here. What you're seeing here is just the fact that the competition gym is a two-story stadium, so you're seeing that information in there. And again, this is kind of the look and feel of where we are right now with the aesthetic design of the high school. I think these have been published on the website, so...
Yeah. And from the steering committee, going back on those, I know one thing the steering committee asked is the brick color, and it would be consistent with the middle school.
Yes.
It's kind of hard to tell that on the drawing without the...
Yeah, and we're talking to some of the folks in town about getting an exact match of that, so that it would be very, very, very close, if not the same brick.
And I know I've said this before, but I'm just gonna reiterate, that kind of the steering committee function very much grounds up. Kevin spent, I don't know how many hours, meeting with small groups of teachers at the high school by department with every facet that would be affected by this. And it was through that that kind of came together what they wanted, what they thought was important. The steering committee also, you know, we had some community members, and they had some input, and kind of came down to two ideas. This was the one that the most people preferred. I know that the teacher on the committee, the student on the committee, and the principal on the committee all liked this one, you know, so it's kind of hard to go against the educators on the committee, when it's a school building. But, but, you know, just some of the things that, and the steering committee that came up to me, because when I first thought of a school, I thought of, you know, nicer learning environment, more up-to-date, just how much safer, how much more accessible this is going to be for all of our students, how much, you know, our hallways are so narrow, it's nerve-wracking and a crisis to get out, and this is going to be addressing a lot of those things. And let alone all the, you know, educational value of it too, but it's, it's gonna, you know, I just, I'm just proud of what y'all came up with. You took seriously what the teacher said about, you know, now if you go to our high school, you see kids sitting in the hallway, you can trip over them. This builds in space for kids to meet individually, to meet in small groups, all those things that really weren't valued in 1960 or whatever, so...
And the input that they continue to take. We had a very thoughtful email this week.
Good, I was, yeah, I was just about to go into that, and one of the next steps that we'll be getting into if the board decides to move forward with is to actually have departmental meetings again with the English department, the social studies, math, science, and all that stuff, just to make sure that what we initially had, the thoughts that they had are coming into fruition, and there'll still be a lot more information that we're gonna garner from them to make this truly something that is, you know, working for, for Woodford County, exactly.
I have a couple of questions. So how many people were on the steering committee?
I don't know off the top of my head. I think there was about 12.
Yeah. Mr. Smith left when he left the district. Let me start, let's see.
I think I've got all these things.
Still ones, you know, Mr. Smith.
I think we talked about trying to keep it around eight, but then it grew.
Yeah, it kind of grew.
So we had Jimmy, Debbie, Danny, Ryan, Brian Troggett, Brenda Richard, Tracy Probst, Andy Smith, Kristen Wilson, and so, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and then we added the principal, Mr. Arnold, so 10.
And I appreciate people giving up their time and volunteering and coming to committee meetings. I guess my concern is that 10 people are kind of the ones who saw this and who have input into this and who were able to choose from two designs you gave them, and they chose this one, or is it higher?
Well, these were open meetings.
Right, right, but essentially 10 people on this steering committee were the ones who were kind of making these decisions. And now it's come, you know, we were gonna have some forums. I know when you came and did the initial presentations, you talked a lot about having community forums and community input, you know, getting community buy-in, because at the end of the day, it really is the taxpayers' dollars that are funding the school. And so, I mean, I just feel like if we were gonna have community meetings, and we were gonna have forums, and we were gonna have parent input on the design process, that that would be something that would happen during the process and then, you know, even now to have the community forums so people can kind of come and see. Because I think probably having the teacher email, what that said to me was that this teacher was in the building and was aware of, you know, the meetings or the committee, and then in looking at the schematic that was put in, which is a little bit different. I don't know if it's the same schematic that's in here, or if he tweaked it based on his input.
No, we haven't, we haven't worked that out with Mr. Green so far.
So it sounded like he had some, some really serious kind of, you know, input and concerns, and it just concerns me that we're at a stage where if you have one teacher saying, oh, I just happened to glance there and I noticed we don't have this, 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 what about we needed this? That concerns me a little. The other thing that concerns me is that on our facilities plan, KDE approved a 1,400-student high school, but I don't think that's what we're getting when I look through the schematics and the information. It looks like we're not getting a 1,400-student high school, and I'm not sure why our facilities plan would say 1,400 students and KDE would approve 1,400 students, but then we wouldn't get a 1,400-student high school.
Okay, I would answer a couple of those things. The steering committee did have a forum at the middle school that was...
About the design?
Yes.
So there was a schematic people could look at and pick a design?
No, but just for preferences.
Yeah, and it was very well attended. And I agree completely.
I mean, Danny and I were the only board members that made it, but, yeah.
I agree completely that there, we need to have more, for sure. I, that's without doubt, but also, all of the teachers that they had sat down with, it wasn't, you know, it was several days that they were in the high school, meeting with the department heads, and then they went back to their individual groups, and they came back again several different times.
About the specific design, or just about we're gonna have a new high school?
Yeah, we actually met at the high school and met with the students and the teachers and have the two options available, and spent a couple days out there doing that as well.
And we have options.
Options grew from those initial meetings.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like, you know, there's been some input, but I guess my concern is we have a schematic for approval that we're, we've kind of just been handed. And you have a teacher emailing us this week saying, hey, there's a huge problem with the engineering, there's a huge problem with the design, I just happened to notice this. And he's, one of the teachers I've been going with.
I wouldn't classify it as a huge problem with the design. I think there's, like I said earlier, we're gonna be meeting with all the different departments again to make sure that we've gotten everything taken care of that they wanted.
Will we recruit the schematic back for that then?
No, there's, there's plenty of other chances. I mean, it's up to you what you decide what you're gonna do, but there's other opportunities at design development and construction documents to work out some of these issues. This is a typical issue that we come up with. For whatever reason, Mr. Green was not involved in the early meetings, and I think that's the root of the problem with not getting his information. And I don't know what happened with that. And then there was a program that was added with computer science that we were not aware of. So I think just moving forward, there's gonna be some stuff that we need to work out. Of course, that's a natural part of the process.
And Mr. Hawkins can clarify on this for sure, but I'm pretty sure Mr. Arnold said that the program that Mr. Green referenced was just added this year.
I'm not aware of that conversation. I'm not sure what your...
The computer science was just added this year.
Yeah, we just added the computer science class.
I hadn't talked to Mr. Arnold about Mr. Green's email.
Okay. But I mean, I'm asking, did we just add computer science this year?
It's unfortunate that it has nothing to do with Kevin, because Mr. Green was not on this list, so we just, you know, yeah.
Well, and if we spend $15 million, we definitely want to make sure that the schematic we approved is, is one that, you know, includes input from teachers and also input from the community, and that just... community, and that just has not happened. My perception of the first forum was that we were just talking about face construction in general. There were no schematics, there was no, "It'll be this big, there'll be this number of rooms, we'll have these programs," you know, that there was none of that discussion involved. This is the...
There were, I think, was. There were discussions of the number of classrooms.
Schematic's a little bit different, I think, when you look at an actual design. So having the community involved in the design and the design process and being able to have input, since it's their tax dollars being spent on it, I feel like is a very important thing to do. And I'm not at all criticizing, you know, the people that served on the committee. I think that's wonderful, but I do think 10 people, you know, to really kind of come up with the entire schematic and what's included and what's not included, and where things go and how things work, it just, you know, it just concerns me, and I would like to see more input. But the other thing is, I was wondering if we can just...
Let her finish, let her finish.
If the local police department or the safety people in Frankfurt or in Richmond have come out and looked at the design and said, you know, "Yeah, that works for us," or "What about this, should we tweak that?" Have we had any safety people kind of review the schematic?
No, we haven't, but that's part of the design development process. So there's a SEPTED, all that gets reviewed during the design development, so we just haven't reached that point yet.
So would we approve the schematic after that, or would we...
No, it's just, it's a process. You do schematic design, and you do design development, and then construction documentation. When the design development submitted is, that's when we submit our SEPTEDs. So that's the crime prevention through environmental design process and checklists.
And our local law enforcement and local emergency programs.
We've actually met with the SROs and all that within the school. If there's the, if we want, if you want us to get the verousales police or whatever to be involved and look at this as well, we can certainly do that.
And the SRO at the high school is with the police department, so...
Correct, yeah, so we did get that out of mention.
I mean, we talked to him, but clearly, I don't know if he shared that with his... I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know, that's a good question.
Because I know you were going to talk to him about all of this.
And the other point, I guess, or the other question you had is that this was a 1,400-square, 1,400-student high school, and that was approved by the DFP. I was not on that. We weren't your architects at that point in time, but that's what KDE approved. When I went and talked to KDE project manager for Woodford County, his name is Gary Leest, he looked at the global data projections for the school, and his recommendation was that it would be 1,350 based on the population growth within the district. What we have done, though, however, is we have sized the Science Classroom, Science Program for 1,400, which added additional classrooms and additional lab space in there.
I think, though, the square...
The only difference between the two, 1,350 and 1,400 is one classroom.
Well, again, if we think we're going to have population growth, and we were able to justify that through the facility planning process, and KDE approved that, I mean, I would just like to see that higher number, because we would be able to get, you know, a bigger building, and that just, it seems to be like when we built the middle school, there was a lot of complaints about we were already overpopulation before we moved in, and it would just be nice to have that mission a fixity, 50 extra students.
You have 1,267 students in there right now, so we're doing 1,350 based on the population projections, which is about 90 more.
Right, but if the facilities plan approved was for 1,400 students, then I would like for us to get...
Well, the facility plan is for a four-year program, and so that is distinct from a building, and so there is kind of a little bit of disconnect there between KDE when they do a DFP and when they actually do the numbers that they will allow for the program.
Any other question?
I think Debbie wanted to say something, and then I had...
I just wanted to say, you know, when we put together the Steering Committee, we did have two community members on there, and they were so thoughtful and so knowledgeable. And I guess, you know, we could have had more, and we probably should have discussed it at that time. The committee, I think it was recommended to be the size it was, just to be manageable and effective, you know, like I just don't know how many more, you know, I would have... And I know that there was a really systematic way to get all the educators' input, the teachers, the, I mean, they were given every opportunity. I'm sorry about Mr. Green, but I know that you're going to be talking with him, and we're going to make sure we got everybody, a list of everybody at the school, but that was very systematic and very well done. Now, with the community portion of it, we had the mayor, who's, you know, we just really relied on him, who knows the community so well.
And Ms. Richards, and then all of the teachers that were represented live in the community as well.
Yeah, so...
And I don't want to discount the work at all.
I mean, if you want to, like, I don't know that we thought we should put two, because there were so many hours involved, it would be hard to replicate that and give everybody all the input that went into that and let everybody vote on it, or put some more people on the committee, or, you know, and then it would be like...
And the committee was formed by this board.
Yeah, the committee, right.
We voted to make the committee that size and how the different people would be designated.
Yeah, it's extremely misleading to the public to keep repeating that only 10 people have made this decision, because you and Debbie both were at those meetings, they were heavily attended, they were open meetings, people had the opportunity to come to those. So there has been more input than just the 10 people on this committee. So, you know, it doesn't, you can say it's only 10 people 15 times, but in reality, it was far more than 10 people who put in their input, and the input from the teachers and the staff and the principals is invaluable. You cannot, you can't discount that and the number of those people that were there. So 10 people and saying that it was 10 people is a reckless statement to put out to the public, in my opinion.
I disagree. I do understand there was one public forum that was far, far higher to be.
I'm okay with you disagreeing, as long as you don't keep telling the public that only 10 people made this decision, because it was far more than that.
How many people voted on this design, Mr. Locke?
Let me just interject. Any more questions for Mr. Locke?
No, thank you.
Kevin, thank you very much.
I'd like to know how many people voted on this design.
I think Miss Bradley, Miss Edlin could answer that for you.
But again, I'm not discounting their work, I'm very appreciative of it. I'm just saying the public is the, the community is the one who's paying for the school, and it would be good to have community forums so that they could attend. I understand there was one community forum prior to any designs, prior to any drawings, prior to any schematics. I'm just saying now that we have schematics and drawings and designs, the process as it was portrayed to us was that there would be multiple opportunities for community input. That's what was stated on the website for the new high school. That was what was stated whenever Mr. Locke appeared and did his presentations to us when we hired him, before we hired him. That hasn't happened. And so I'm not at all saying I think the committee did a bad job, I'm simply saying it's $50 million, we need to have some input from the community, that's all.
And we're fine with what we decide as far as, I mean, we'd love to show off this building and talk about it, but...
I think that it's fine to do that, too.
Is there a motion to approve item G, the design for the new high school, Phase 1 There's a motion by Miss Richardson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Miss Bradley. Any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I want to point out very much upfront that we've been told by Ms. Smith and by Mr. Locke that this is a fluid process, this is the first step, but this plan will be revised and amended several times over the next however many months. And I absolutely agree that we do need to have a community forum and hear, show these drawings, and hear the feedback and the ideas, and that is still completely feasible going forward with maybe a clearer direction than what we could have had in months previous, because we do have something that we can show and say, "Here's what we're thinking, we'd love your feedback." And we've had all of the Steering Committee meetings were publicized in accordance with open records or open meetings law, and were posted, and were open to the public, just like our meetings are.
I just have a final question, Mr. Wilson. What is the cost of the schematic? I didn't notice that in our paperwork.
I believe that's included in the...
That's included in the package that we got.
The one in the back here, what is that number?
I think that is sitting at roughly $48 million total.
$48 million, and how much have we approved in the BG-1 to build this face high school, do you know?
You've approved $29,625,000, is that correct, Amy, for the construction cost?
I remember memorizing, but it's 36 total.
Thirty-six total.
So again, I'm just, I guess, confused as to why we approve a schematic that's far and above what we've approved to fund the school. It just doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. It feels like, you know, there just are a lot of questions, and, you know, it's a huge expense. I really wish we would take the time to involve the community and also to, you know, answer some questions and have, you know, the teachers be able to look at the schematic now, and then if we have more teachers like Mr. Green who come forward and have suggestions or tweaks to be able to kind of have all that done prior to going out and saying, "Here's the, here's the schematic, here's our, what we're moving forward with." But again...
You can't have it both ways. You can't say, "I want community input," but then you want it all firmed up with the teachers. So I think by not being completely completed, the community input will be taken into account as well. And the teachers saw both designs, correct?
Yes.
They saw both designs and had...
At the staff meeting.
At a staff, and had ample opportunity to weigh in at that point.
Any further discussion?
With all due respect, I really do believe there's not been ample opportunity for the community or the teachers or even this board to really, you know, get their hands around. We just received this tonight. And again, I just don't see what the rush is to approve the schematic if it's a fluid process. It feels like we would want to involve the community as part of the process. So now that this is out there, the community should be able to see it, the teachers should be able to see it, and people should be able to have input.
The teachers have seen it. Okay, the teachers have seen it.
Any further discussion? There's a motion on the floor by Miss Richardson, a second by Miss Edlin, to approve item G. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries forward among the Springgate voting, nay.
Sherry, I apologize for snapping, but of course Mr. Green saw it, or he would not have sent the email.
Next is remove one item from the consent agenda upon request by a member, item H. The next item on the agenda is to approve a travel request for a communications officer to attend training at Harvard. Is there a second? Is there a motion, excuse me?
Someone?
Is there a motion, is there a second? Is there a second? My motion dies for lack of second. All right, we have two...
I just have been on the board for eight years now, and I don't know that we've ever not approved a travel request. That's never happened. I guess I'm just kind of flabbergasted. I'm not sure, is there an objection to the call?
I think my problem with it is, and again, as we go forward with a new school, and as we look at our expenses, and as we've been presented our projections absent the new school, if we don't raise 4% every year, that we're going to have to start looking at every cost. That's mine. I was doing it last year, too, you know, maybe a bigger amount than this amount. But I also think, especially after our discussion with the data tonight and our Title I dollars, and this is, nobody, I mean, I absolutely believe in family engagement. I've pushed for parent involvement always, so it's just a matter of how we spend it. Is it the most, going to get the most bang for your buck?
Well, and I would say that, you know, we had multiple travel requests on tonight, and we've had multiple travel requests on this entire year and the eight years that I've been on the board, and never once has one been denied. You know, we commissioned and paid for an equity audit. The equity audit came in, and the auditor said, "Here are my recommendations, here's my plan, this is what I need for you to do as a district to improve your equity, to make these changes so that you're a better district. This is my recommendation." And then to have the board not approve their recommendation...
Was this the auditor? This wasn't an audit recommendation. I think family engagement was, and again, I didn't vote against family engagement.
It was a recommendation from the...
To send somebody...
To, to, to work with family engagement, to have a district-wide focus, to, to do the things that all of our people do when they go to the trainings. And again, I just am not clear on, even if she doesn't go, the cost of that, that trip wouldn't go into the general fund and couldn't be used for the high school, so I'm not really...
No, it could be used for other Title I activities.
And we would be approaching for someone who has no engagement with any family in the district to be going to this, going on this trip. Why didn't we send our family resource officer? Even if they're not at the high school level, they still are involved with how many families at the elementary level. And the reason I didn't want it to go through is because of that. I don't see why we're sending a communications specialist to Harvard at a cost of $3,500 when it has nothing to do with her job description. And I don't have to give you any other explanation, that's why.
I do disagree, and I would say that we approved the travel request. We don't get to approve which staff go and do which things, number one, but number two, it's a district-wide initiative. The whole district has to be involved in equity, not just one resource center person from one elementary. It's a district-wide initiative. But again, the board does not get to choose which staff goes on which trips, or how, you know, the school decides to fund things. We simply did the equity audit, received recommendations, and then when we receive those recommendations from professionals that we pay for, it makes no sense to me to then not follow those recommendations.
All right, thank you all very much. That concludes our regular agenda. We go to discussions. Item, Miss Springgate asks that two items be placed on the agenda and for the discussion, and I'll turn it over to, for item A, she's got board attorney, Miss Springgate.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I ask that this item be placed on the agenda, again, after having public input. I feel like as a public member, if I came to a board and had a comment or a request or a concern, that I would want for it to be addressed, that I wouldn't want the board just to sit, kind of ignore what I say, and then leave, and then come back the next month and have no, just no genuine communication or response to my concern. Again, I wouldn't want to be treated that way, and I certainly don't want to treat you that way.
Are we talking about the board attorney or the public forum?
You're talking, go ahead.
Talking about the board attorney. So we had a public comment session this year where someone came and spoke with us about the board attorney, and then we've also had people speak with us about the forum, but this is the board attorney specifically. So last month, during the public comment period of our board meeting, a community member expressed concern over money being spent on the board attorney that was hired in August. Through the end of November, our board has paid Joshua Salisbury $11,773.80. This sum of money is very concerning to me also. I have asked for and analyzed the itemized bills from the past four months, and some alarming facts came to light. Number one, nearly half of all the attorney fees from the 45 separate communications with one, with the, came with one or two board members. I have only participated in one of these 45 separate communications. Number two, there have been only seven email communications to the whole full board. Number three, over $3,000 has been spent for Mr. Salisbury to attend board meetings with no designated purpose. Number four, there have been zero face-to-face meetings held with the full board. And number five, the very night that he was hired on August 12, he privately met with some board members. I was unaware of the meeting until I had the opportunity to review the expense reports. Oddly enough, it wasn't listed on the August statement, and I didn't even see it appear until the September bill. To illustrate the point I'm making this evening, I'd like to share a specific incident that happened last month. I arrived at the board office ahead of a closed session meeting that was scheduled to begin at 5:00. When I arrived around 4:45, I was surprised to find some board members meeting with Mr. Salisbury in a small room on the first floor of our district building. Why were they meeting? What were they discussing? I have no idea. Furthermore, why wouldn't he just have met with the entire board since we had a meeting scheduled for 5:00 that evening? This incident is one of many such meetings and conversations I question now after analyzing the bills from the past four months. School board attorneys represent the board as a body, not individual members. The number of conversations between Mr. Salisbury and one or two board members is very concerning, and the fact that the content of the conversations has not been shared with the full board is of even greater concern. There is no attorney-client privilege with individual board members, and no individual board member has any greater authority than another. It is worth repeating that Mr. Salisbury represents the board as a collective, not as individuals. Tonight, I am calling for complete trans... Tonight, I am calling for complete transparency and an end to the secrecy that has occurred over the past four months, specifically I'm requesting the following, number one, I'm asking for a summary of Mr. Salisbury's, each of his forty-five meetings and/or phone conversations or communications that have occurred over the past four months, I'm asking that the summaries be sent to the full board. Number two, I'm requesting an itemized attorney bill be forwarded to the board members as soon as they are received. Number three, I'm asking Mr. Salisbury to send an email communication to all board members within twenty-four to forty-eight hours of a conversation that he has with a board member summarizing all aspects of that conversation. Number four, I'm asking the board to institute a protocol for communicating with board attorneys. Not only will a defined protocol be more efficient, but will also help eliminate costs. The protocol should clearly outline how the attorney is authorized to conduct business and provide services. Individual board members should not be requesting Mr. Salisbury to attend board meetings, since the decision involves the use of general fund dollars, it should be made by the entire board, not individuals. Currently, our practice is to allow board members to communicate or request services at will. Potentially, an attorney could answer the same question for multiple board members at a cost of one hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour, this is not a prudent way to spend our tax dollars. Once the new protocol is put into place, it should be instituted for other agents, agent employed by the board, including the architect and bonding agents. I feel strongly that these four practices will increase transparency and efficiency and lead to savings. In closing, I find it hard to believe we have spent nearly twelve thousand dollars to improve relations between the board and the superintendent, yet there have been only seven email communications with the full board and no face-to-face meetings. It's evident that there's a very clear agenda from certain board members on the board, and I understand that I'm in a minority when it comes to supporting this agenda, but as a board member, it's my lawful right to participate in decision-making processes, and that cannot be denied. I'm hurt enough and treated in this manner, and I'm hopeful that board relations will improve in the coming year.
Thank you, Ms. Springgate, item B, set dates for public forums.
Again, I've been asking for a public forum since the architects first came and spoke with us, February, March of this year, I feel strongly that a public forum is needed, we are spending forty, thirty, fifty million tax dollars, we're not even sure it changes, and, and they're the tax dollars of this community, they're taxpayers' tax dollars, and we should have forums, multiple forums, like it was promised, like we were told that would happen, that, that should be something that we do, we should always strive to do that, so I'm just asking that we set a date, even though I know we've set a couple dates and they've been canceled, I would like to have us set a date for, and, the forum that was approved months ago, just to set the date for that forum.
Mr. Wilson, can I say something about her first points?
What, you're talking about item A or B?
What she discussed first.
Oh, item A, okay.
I totally one hundred and fifty percent agree that we need a protocol for contacting the attorney. My recommendation is, and we haven't talked about this, but maybe I just thought about it, that all communications with Mr. Salisbury or with Mr. Chinowitz go through Mr. Wilson. If he wants us to go ahead and call ourselves, then he could say that, but we should share that then with the whole board, but I do agree that all contacts with the attorney should go through the community, so I don't know how that people feel about that, I would like that to, you know, if we can agree on that, to just begin immediately. And then, I'm all for setting a forum, we can show this, that, you know, we can show what we've come up with through all the work with the steering committee, we have that to show now, we have it in a good form to show and to receive input on, it's specific enough that people can really provide input, you know, it's not vague, we're gonna have this or that, so it's in a good spot now, so I would be willing, I'd be ready to set that date after Christmas.
Ms. Springgate, you have anything else for us, I didn't mean to interrupt you on item B, were you finished with item B?
Oh, I'm sorry, Sherry, I thought we were done, that's good.
That's okay, I just would, yeah, like to have that, that first date set for that first forum, and then I'm not opposed to having forums after that, I think we had, you know, as a board, multiple, multiple forums when we were discussing the nickel tax, which really has a smaller economic impact on the taxpayers than, than what we're talking about doing now, so I would love to see multiple forums, the information that was provided for that first forum that is on our website under the meeting minutes, when you click on it, those, those handouts I think would be important to share, and then having a forum with the schematic and having the public come and be able to have some input, I think, would be great, and I do think multiple forums are a good idea, and you might have five people, you might have fifty people, you might have five hundred people, but I do think it's important to offer that opportunity to the full community.
Um, I think we can start with the first date, you know how hard it is with dates, I know that the mayor, Trogad, is interested in participating in this, is a community member and is a leader, so we would want to check with him, too, and of course the architects and everybody, but I, I could see something in the world January, I would be fine with that.
If we could go ahead and just get that date, that would be wonderful, because I think we're gonna need to publicize it in case...
Yeah, and we need to, I want to make sure we check with Brian and Trogad and Brenda Richards, who are community members on the steering committee, because I think they're interested in being there and participating as well, they are community members.
Yeah, no, I understand, I was trying to think what would move this forward so that we could, could have that accomplished.
Well, let's do a date, we know that Brian passed up on Tuesday night, so let's just try and not do it.
So, should we pick a date, or should we have Mr. Locke or somebody?
No, I was thinking we could pick a date, make sure Mr. Locke can be there, and then we'll check with Brian, but I think we give him enough time there.
Are you suggesting a date, Ms. Springgate?
Yes, in January?
Might be helpful to have Mr. Hawkins look at his first.
When do we meet in January?
Uh, not until the twenty-first and the twenty-second.
Well, we come back again to what we're gonna do in this forum, and I really, you know, Kevin has stuff to show, and...
Yeah, I think it'd be great to share the specifics of the schematic design and get feedback on that.
Well, I think for the first forum, we've already voted and, and approved what was, what was gonna be discussed there, so if we could just do the first one, and then do the schematic maybe as a separate one.
We haven't voted on anything as far as content.
We did, a motion that was made and passed unanimously that was very specific about what the forum would, would discuss, and so if we could just get a date for that, that would be wonderful.
What was that? The specifics of what we would discuss, do you remember those?
It, it was in the motion, but basically just the pros and the cons, the short term and long term, financial impacts, what it would be a cost to the taxpayers, uh...
How many forums do you suggest we have, what would satisfy you?
Well, I would think at least beginning with the first one would be good, and then we can just kind of go from there, but it sounds like they're also on board with doing one with the schematic, so that would be, that would be...
I would like to do the schematic first, I think we're studying, starting our budgeting process in January, and there may, you know, be a few, just a little bit more specifics, I know January is always kind of a guess when we start that budget process, but we might have some more numbers as far as what that budget's gonna be, so we could, that, I would, I would prefer to start with the schematic, because Kevin's ready to go, he can do most of the work on that, along with the community members and the process.
And again, with all due respect, we've already had a motion to have a community forum to discuss the, the kinds of things that I was discussing a moment ago, we set the date twice, it got canceled, we've already had a work session to look at the documents and the pay for that session, so if we could just go ahead and start with the first one, I'm, I mean, anytime in January is fine with me and Mr. Hawkins, I don't know what the calendar looks like.
What did you say?
She was asking, she was trying to find the language for the...
I remember typing, yeah, I just don't remember the exact language. Well, Mr. Hawkins is coming up, has developed a new spreadsheet since we decided to do that, as I recall, most of the information that was put on the website had to do with our revenue side, I'm very interested in explaining to the public our expense side, what efforts we're gonna be taking to look at that as well, and I'm just, you know, I don't, I just think that should be part of a full package with the top debt finances, because the spreadsheet that he's developed shows like, not only on what restricting this money will do, but just kind of the overall finances in general that I think are important to be able to explain and to, to make everybody understand that we're also looking at expenses, and have a clearer picture on that, and I don't think that spreadsheet is anything we've actually discussed as a group, so, I mean, it's been around the county, but...
Well, and again, we have had a work session, and, and we did go over what would be included in that, and the document you're talking about, Mr. Hawkins, did present to the board, there were some board members absent, but it was presented to the full board.
Superintendent, superintendent has suggested January the sixteenth, a Thursday night.
Or the twenty-third, is there?
Oh, the twenty-third, okay, well, superintendent and I will work together.
I'm good, I need a date.
Okay, uh, the sixteenth to twenty-third, we'll work with, uh...
I don't understand any of that.
No, I'm not the reason I can... Would you get in touch with, uh...
Brian.
Brian?
The twenty-third would be my preference, if...
Ms. Richards?
I'm fine with either one.
Ms. Richards?
She said either one.
To be sure they can be there.
Yes.
We'll, we'll set a tentative date for January twenty-third, the superintendent and I will work on the agenda of the meeting and what information will be included.
You had the language on that?
Okay. Have you got it?
She had the language on it.
Uh, it was at the September twenty-third, board meeting, motion passed a whole community forum on funding options for new high school with an analysis of the short-term and long-term costs for each option, I'd have KDE, Hillier clients, and architect present pass the motion, we had, I was for the one with one option.
Anything else this evening? Ms. Richardson?
Um, it's now, I've said it.
Ms. Edelen?
Thank you.
Ms. Springgate?
Happy holidays to everybody.
Ms. Springgate?
Yes, I would just say that I attended the KSBA conference, and the training was really good, there were a lot of sessions that are very valuable, and, again, I do think that having clarification about, and some education about roles and responsibilities and long-term financial planning, and just all of those things that they do at the conferences is, is a very valuable thing, and it was a good session this year.
Thank you. Ms. Bradley?
Uh, no, I think we've set it off, I would thank Officer Button again, and...
Yes, indeed.
I believe Chief Cole is also leaving, and would thank him for his service to the district, and, um, one other thing I would say is, I wonder if it's possible, I see that guys from Trace Creek here again, and they were here at the planning meeting, is there some way that we could figure out if they need to come, if their input's gonna be needed, and kind of give them a heads up, I hate for them to drive all that way.
Well, I had requested they come last week because of the agenda item on the schematic, it wa, I was not aware that Mr. Locke was not gonna be here, so we had that discussion today, and they wanted to be here for, for it today.
That's fair, I just was thinking, having not talked to him, I maybe...
I appreciate that, we...
Okay.
It's a lovely place to come to.
Anything else, thanks, Ms. Bradley?
No, thank you to all of our teachers, and happy holidays to everyone.
When it comes, when it comes back, I would like to reiterate this one more time so everybody can hear, when it comes to the agenda for the January twenty-third public forum, superintendent and I will finalize the agenda, any information included will be sent to each of you a week in advance, okay? All right, motion to adjourn, by Ms. Springgate, a second by Ms. Bradley, all in favor say aye. Thank you all very much.